Let me call the regular board meeting for November. It is November sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. It is now six thirty. Determination, we have a quorum. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sáenz.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Judith Solís.
Present.
Myself, Dana García is present as well. Section two canvases, canvas election. Item one, canvas election return of the school board of trustee election of November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, and approval of the order declaring results of trustee election.
Ladies and gentlemen, school board members and newly elected school board members. My name is Ida Gonzalez, and we have the order declaring the results of the trustee election. We have canvassed, today's the first day that we can canvass the election. The results are as they were posted the first night. Mrs. Lorenzo Martinez received four thousand five hundred and seven votes. Mrs. Letio López received four thousand six hundred and seventeen. Mr. Elizar Velázquez Junior, I'm sorry, received four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine. Mr. Noé Ricardo González received four thousand four hundred and sixty. Dr. B or Daria Babino received four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two votes. Basilio Batxó Vélez Real received four thousand four hundred and thirty-five votes. Board President Daniel J. García received four thousand eight hundred and four votes. And Mr. Ruben Klein received four thousand three hundred and thirty-six. These are the official results for the school board election, and we ask that this be approved at this time.
Do we have a motion, item one?
I saw move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Sáenz. Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Before we go on to item two and three, I do want to take the time to thank Mr. Benito Sáenz, as well as Mr. González and Mr. Klein for their service on the school board trustees for the district. You know, we appreciated his service. We learned so much from him. He's a true educator. He really, as he came in at the, on the board, and as he stepped down, Mr. Benito Sáenz, we can truly say that the district is in a better place. And for that, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, signing of officer's statement. And I also, also, item three, administration of office, of the oath of office of new board members, Letizia O. López, for place one. Elizar Velázquez Junior for place two. Daria E. Babino for place four. And Daniel J. García for place five. And also, I want to thank Ms. Judge Analisa Garza. You know, she, she was busy in Duval County. She took the time to rearrange her schedule to be here and assist us with the swearing. And for that, we thank you, Judge Garza.
Do y'all want to come down and do the statements down here? Okay, in order to be a little bit more efficient here, I'm gonna swear in everybody at the same time, but when it's their turn, I'll have them say their name, and each one will be repeating after me. I don't want to give you my back, and I don't want them to give you their back, so we're kind of gonna be just sideways. So, with that being said, we'll go ahead and get started. Everybody raise your right hand. Aye. Well, hold on. Aye.
Daniel J. García.
Aye, Letizia O. López.
Daria Dr. B. Babino.
Elizar Velázquez Junior.
Okay. Repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered or promised to pay.
Offered or promised to pay.
Or to contribute any money.
Or to contribute any money.
Or thing of value.
Or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving.
For the giving.
Or withholding of a vote.
Or withholding of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And so the, you can put your hands down. The title of position to which each person was elected is school board trustee, and you'll have a, a sign for, oh, you already have the place, so I'll have you read your positions out loud.
Rio Grande City C I S D School Board, place five.
Place one. Place four.
Place two.
Okay, so if all of you all will sign, sign off on that now, y'all can go to the podium if you need to. I'll go ahead and sign those, and then we'll continue with the oath. And if y'all will give them to me, because I have to sign first before I give you the oath. Okay, so we're gonna do the oath, but I think this one needs to be done individually, because it's so important that, I don't think we should take from the solemnity of the occasion, so I'm gonna take this one individually. I think the public is entitled to that. So, first of all, it's hard to hold the statement and the mic and lift my hat. Need one more hand, right? Okay, I'm gonna take him first. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
Aye, Daniel J. García.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of. Rio Grande City C I S D School Board, place number five.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
Letizia O. López.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of.
Execute the duties of.
The office of.
The office of. Rio Grande City C I S D School Board, place number one.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
I, Daria Dr. B. Babino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of Rio Grande City C I S D, place number four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of this great state of Texas.
And of this great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, here we go. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
Elizar Velázquez Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of.
Of Rio Grande City C I S D, place number two.
Trustee.
Trustee.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the, of the United States of America.
And of the great state of Texas.
And of the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So let me go ahead and sign off on this, and congratulations to all of you and to the new board. And I know that all of you look forward to a new year, maybe with a new president. Hopefully, we're all in prayer that that's gonna go well, and he's gonna prove that he can step above and, and be a great president, and hopefully, the school board will follow suit, and everything will be great in two thousand and seventeen. So let's all pray for a great two thousand and seventeen. Thank you all. I've had court all day in Duval County. It was crazy. No problem. I wouldn't have missed it for the world. My honor to be here.
Again, thank you, Judge Garza. At this time, we will be having a fifteen to twenty minute reception, so we can have pictures with our families and supporters and friends. And we, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. But we have a fifteen to twenty minute reception before we begin the board meeting. It is seven twenty-three. We're back in the general meeting. Let me call this meeting to order. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Ms. Leti López.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Judith Solís.
Present.
Dr. B.
Present.
Mr. Elizar Velázquez.
Present.
And Daniel García is, is present as well. We do have a quorum, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. García, I wanted to share something.
Yeah, before we get started, I'd like to, on behalf of the students of the district and the rest of the Rio Grande City family, I want to thank Mr. Benito Sáenz, Noé González, and Mr. Klein for their dedication this year on the board. I've only been here six months, but we work diligently, we work hard to ensure that we did the best for the students. To Ms. Leti López, Dr. B., and Mr. Velázquez, welcome. On behalf of our students, I'm looking forward, I'm totally committed as your superintendent to ensure that we do the best that we can for the students, and I expect your commitment so that we can make sure that we continue with the connection and building that foundation for students of the district. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Conduct election of Board of Education Officers oral presentation. We have the Board Secretary. Do we have a nomination for Board Secretary?
I nominate Judith Solís.
We have a nomination for Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. For Vice President, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Eddie Ramírez for Vice President.
We have a nomination for Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a, by Ms. Solís, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velázquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Board President, do we have a nomination for Board President?
I nominate Danny J. García.
We have a nomination by Dr. B. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I just want to say, thank you to the board for trusting us as your officers. As a board, just want to say, you know, I believe we, we started with a, you know, team change, you know, and we have the team restore, team kid choice, but now, we're known as the RGCC I S D Board of Trustees, and we're looking forward to doing, putting all our abilities to do what's best for our students and the district. And we'll be doing that together as this board for the next two years. Appointment of Board of Education Standing Committees. We, we do have a list that was passed out. I believe there's no motion that is required.
By acclamation, or? I move that we approve the committees by acclamation. Committee appointments.
Okay.
Everybody has a copy.
We have a, a motion of, for acclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes for special board meeting, October sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Special board meeting, October thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Regular board meeting, October eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We have a motion for approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Open for. Item one, consider and take possible action on travel requests from Ringo Middle School, Gruia Middle School, Verens Middle School, Gruia High School, and Rio High School.
These are requests, requesting your approval. We recommend the approval.
We have a, a request. Do we have a motion, item one?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velázquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from HEB to host the Feast of Sharing Dinner for Rio Grande City and surrounding communities on December first, two thousand and sixteen.
HEB is requesting the use of Ringo Elementary facilities for the Feast of Sharing for the Rio Grande City C I S D and the surrounding communities. The event will take place on December the first. The administration recommends approval.
Do we have any discussion, item two? No question. Do we have a motion, item two?
I move that we approve this item as presented.
We have a motion for item two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Rio Grande City Little League.
Attached, Mr. Board President, you have a request there from the Rio Grande City Little League for the use of the Rattlers Baseball Field at Fort Ringo for the home games on, and they start on October the thirty-first, and they go through December the sixteenth. They are covered with all, you know, the liability insurance and so forth. This is just an opportunity. The A.D.'s involved with this, so is the assistant A.D., and so is the head coach for baseball, and we, we recommend approval for the use of the facilities.
Do we have a, any discussion, item three? Have a motion, item three?
I saw move.
We, we have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on request for use of school facilities from Medina Electric Corporation for their annual nominating meeting on February ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Medina Electric Co-op Incorporated submitted a request for the use of the facilities here at the MPC for their annual nominating meeting. This meeting is held every year, however, it's, it's used in different locations as part of the service, the, the area, and the, this year, they, they voted to have it here in Rio Grande City. The meeting would be on Thursday, February the ninth, two thousand and seventeen, at six, with about fifteen to twenty-five people attending this meeting. The administration has no conflict with the schedules or anything, so the administration recommends approval of the request from Medina Electric.
Do we have a motion, item four?
I saw move.
We have a motion on item four. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on request for use of RGCC I S D bleachers from the Pediatric Care Center for their annual Winter Wonderland, two thousand and sixteen event.
The Pediatric Care Center has requested permission to use RGCC I S D property, bleachers in specific, for their annual Winter Wonderland event this year. This is scheduled for Saturday, December the third, from four P.M. to ten P.M. for the children of the community. The administration recommends approval for the request.
I abstain.
Do we have a motion, item five?
I move that we approve this item.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velázquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, with Dr. B. abstaining. Item six, consider and take possible action on request for the Pediatric Care Center for temporary license from the Texas Alcohol Beverage at the Stark County Fairgrounds and Sheriff's Posse Arena at their annual Winter Wonderland, two thousand and sixteen event.
Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District is the owner of the property, known as the Stark County Fairgrounds and the Sheriff's Posse Arena, which is located at thirteen twenty-three East San Benito Street, Rio Grande City, Texas. Said property is currently under a ninety-nine-year lease to the Stark County Fair Association, and Rio Grande City C I S D does not have possession nor control of the property, premise or any function thereon. As long as all the requirement laws, statutes are complied, RGCC I S D will not contest the Child Wellness Network Incorporated applying for and receiving a temporary license from the T A B C. This temporary license shall be in effect as of to the above-named property and shall apply on the following dates, only on December second through the fourth, from twelve P.M. to eleven thirty P.M. each day. The administration recommends approval of this temporary license effective following dates for, for this event.
I abstain.
We have a, do we have a motion, item six?
I move to approve this item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velázquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, with Ms., Dr. B. abstaining. Item seven, consider and take possible action on donations to RGCC I S D.
The following donations have been received by the district. We have the campus departments, the amounts, the dates, and donors. Would you like me to go over each one of them, or?
As long as you send them a thank you letter.
We'll do that. No problem. We recommend approval of all the donations to RGCC I S D.
Do we have a motion, item seven?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís for item seven. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on computer system license and maintenance agreement between Appraisal and Collection Technologies LLC and RGCC I S D.
The Rio Grande City C I S D Tax Office has proposed an agreement with the Appraisal and Collection Technologies LLC for the computer system license and maintenance agreement needed for the collection of taxes. The contract is from December the first through November thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, for a total of twenty-one thousand. Amount is the same as the prior year. This is simply a renewal. We use the software to collect taxes. It just, we're requesting that you approve this request with the computer system license and management agreement with the appraisal and collection technology.
Right. Any discussion, item eight? Have a motion, item eight?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on resolution on annual review of investment policies and investment strategies.
As required by the Texas Government Code two-two-five-six and the school board policy, the district investment policy and strategy must be reviewed annually. The policy and strategies recommended were developed with the assistance of TASB Policy Service and meet all district needs and laws. We recommend approval. This is something that we do annually.
Do we have any discussion, item nine? Do we have a motion, item nine?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramírez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item ten, consider and take possible action on resolution of sources of instruction relating to investment responsibilities.
Stark County Appraisal District total, are we talking on number eleven?
Ten.
Number ten, I'm sorry. Okay. Texas Government Code twenty-two fifty-six and the school board investment policy requires that the treasurer, chief financial officer, and the investment officer of the local, of a local governmental attend institution related to investments, responsibilities from an independent source, approved by the governing body of the local government. The School Board Association, the School Administratives Association, the Association of School Business Officials, the University of Texas at San Antonio, the Texas Association of Counties, the University of North Texas, and the Government Treasurer Association, Texas Tech University, first out with company and Patterson and Associates providing investment training sessions relating to these investment policies. We attend these. We did this year. We, we do, we have to, we're required so. So we are asking, the administration is asking for approval and recommend that we approve this instruction-related investment responsibilities.
Any discussion, item ten? Do we have a motion, item ten?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion, a motion by Ms. Solís. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eleven, considering take possible action on Stark County Appraisal District payment schedule for twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
The Stark County Appraisal District total allocation for the year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen is five hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-two, forty-six. Installments are of one hundred and twenty-one, zero seventy-one, point ninety-seven for each quarter due on December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, March the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and finally September the thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. This payment schedule is based on the two thousand seventeen budget for the appraisal district and the tax levy for the Rio Grande City CISED. Administration recommends approval for the Stark, of the Stark County Appraisal District payment schedule.
Do we have a motion item eleven?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item twelve, considering take possible action on budget amendment, number twenty-seventeen dash one.
Attached, you have a budget amendment, uh, two thousand seventeen one. This amendment is being prepared to revise the current budget. Religions to expenditures are presented to you for your review. This is basically, Mr. President, a food service, uh, budget amendment, and this is actually a continuance of their expenditures that were, uh, part of an expenditure plan by the state and all they're doing is just trying to meet the standards as approved by the state on purchasing furniture and equipment and stuff like that.
We have a motion item twelve?
So move.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, considering take possible action on tax refunds for the month of tw- October twenty sixteen.
Presented the request for the approval of tax refunds for October. Refunds totaling one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight and twelve cents. Attached is summary of the refunds. We recommend approval of the tax refund for the amount.
We have a motion on item thirteen?
So move.
We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, considering take possible action on agreement between Texas Migrant Council and RGCC ISD to provide food services for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year.
This, uh, agreement in between RGCC ISD and the Texas, uh, Migrant Council to provide food service for the provision of meals as outlined in the agreement, uh, Rio Grande City CISED Child Nutrition Program claims all programmed meals for the reimbursement. Basically, what this is, uh, Mr. Chair, is this is new. Uh, the TMC will no longer provide food for their kids and has requested the district to cater, basically to them, for a fee. Uh, looked very good, very promising. Uh, we went over it and we presented to you. It's a good endeavor. Uh, I believe the Roma Schools are gonna do it, Zapata Schools are gonna do it. Uh, and I think we need to take advantage of it. We recommend approval of this program. It's a one-year agreement and they approve every year. The only thing different here that we might wanna be just notice is that we'd like to start with the school calendar, you know, instead of from January to January, but other than that, it's, uh, it's financially very sound and, uh, we, we recommend, uh, the approval.
Mr. Garcia, on the fees for this, are the, is there any difference of what we would charge our regular students here in the district?
Uh, I believe that we would be making, uh, very good, uh, amounts. Uh, the amounts that I have here, sir, are one seventy-one for breakfast, uh, three thirty-nine for lunch, and eighty-six cents for supper. You'll be making a total of six dollars per day per student and, uh, we have numbers that, uh, estimate that we will making, uh, per de- per diem, over two thousand dollars per diem. So, uh, very healthy and very profitable. I think that, uh, we're here to serve, to serve them for, for the year and, uh, and to answer your question, I believe so. You know,
That we're charging the same amount?
Yes, sir. I believe so. So, um, I, I have a, uh, I had questions on it as far as the agreement, when it began, the number of campuses involved. And, uh, we have eight sites that will be involved with this. And the amount of approximate meals per day will be looking at three hundred and eighty-nine daily at, uh, six dollars, uh, per, per, per day. And then, uh, the meal rate, I just mentioned them to you. The school calendar, if we can change it, of course, because they're starting late this year. They're gonna start in January. But if we start next year, we should be able to have adjustments on there. And, uh, whatever other information we have pertinent to this will be, you know, uh, allowable for us to, to go over and stuff like that. So what we like about it, it's, it's basically a catering service to them to serve the kids. It's, it's basically what we do with the MIC, uh, Immaculate Conception, uh, uh, school. Basically, that's what we do. Same thing.
We have a, any more discussion item fourteen? We have a motion on item fourteen?
I move to approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, considering take possible action on requisitions five thousand and over in a twelve-month aggregate. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, newly elected, uh, board members. We do have for your consideration requisitions over five thousand dollars, uh, in a twelve-month aggregate. And also, I, uh, left a handout. I don't know if you have that left on at
Yes.
each of the desks. Uh, so we, we have these requisition for your consideration and there's proper funding available for all these, uh, requests.
Any discussion item fifteen? We have a motion item fifteen?
I move we approve the item as presented.
We have a motion by Ms. Solis. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freddy. Anything or reports?
No, sir.
It is seven forty-four. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code Section five-five-one, point oh-seven-one, we'll be heading into closed session. It is, uh, now eight-eight, eight-twelve. We're out of closed session and maybe I should have made this announcement where the room was full. Uh, we wanna congratulate our Gruia Gator Football Team on their back district championship. Mr. Garcia did inform us there'll be early release where we're encouraging our, our community to try to attend their game and show them some support, uh, this Friday. It is, uh, item A does not require any action. Do we have a motion on item B?
I move that we approve item B as discussed in a second session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr., by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have a motion on item C?
And whether we approve item C as discussed in a second session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I so move.
Do we have, we have a motion for adjournment? Do we have a second?
We gotta go to sleep.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. Uh, it is eight-thirteen and meeting is now adjourned.
Weather alert.
It's an emerald.
Oh, emerald.